Okay, we call a meeting to order. Would you rise for the pledges of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll.
Mr. Brewer?
Here.
Ms. Grant?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Case?
Here.
Ms. Todd?
Okay, the approval of minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes for September 26.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Todd, second by trustee Jones. Any questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Brewer?
Yes.
Grant?
No.
Jones?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
No.
Okay, motion is carried. I'll entertain a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes for November 14, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Todd, second by trustee Brewer. Are there any questions?
Comment?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I know that we received revised minutes today for this particular meeting, and I would bring to the board's attention before they vote on this that it appears that, under the reports of officers, that your report is what changed because it was incorrect previously. However, even the revised version, unless I'm missing it somewhere, I still don't see where you actually appointed the treasurer for a period of 30 days at that time.
Yes, I did. Any other comments? Yes, I did. I appointed at that time because it was voted down because it wasn't on the agenda, so I did a temporary appointment for 30 days. Any other questions? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Brewer?
Yes.
Grant?
I'm standing.
So moved.
No.
Case?
Yes.
No.
Okay, I'll accept the motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes for December
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Todd, second by trustee Jones. Are there any questions?
Yes, comment.
Okay.
The meeting minutes for December 12 indicate that we had executive session that evening, when in fact we did not. There's other issues, but I thought that was the most salient. Thank you.
Any other questions, any other comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Jones?
No.
Case?
No.
No. Brewer?
No.
Grant?
No.
And last, I'll accept the motion to approve the special meeting minutes for December 19, 2017.
Comment? Have a comment?
We've been getting a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Grant, second by trustee Jones. Any questions?
Question or comment? At the top of the page, it states that the meeting started at 6 o'clock. Then it says called to order, may it verge as called special meeting of the corporate authorities to order at 6:30. And then at the end, in the German, we adjourned at 6:28, so I think the times are wrong, a mix-up. I'm just putting it out there.
You know, minutes can be approved with recommended corrections.
Any other questions from the board? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Case?
No.
No. Brewer?
No.
Grant?
No.
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 Motion is failed. Item number five, public comment. All questions and comments must be directed to the mayor. Each speaker may comment on any matter pertaining to the business of Sawt Village. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak for up to three minutes and may not engage in debate. Will you stand up just please? Give us your name.
Renee Richardson. Mayor, I wanted to just bring something to your attention since we have to talk directly to you. On our last meeting, one of your clerks, Ms. Brewer, had came to you in regards to an issue in regards to money. The comments that you gave her, that was between you and her. But I would like to bring to your attention that she asked you about a $250,000 money that went on, that nobody seemed to have known about, coming out of the water fund. I haven't heard anything, I don't say anything at any of these meetings, basically. $250,000 showed coming out of the water fund, but didn't show where it went. Okay? During this time, I took the time to ask for your requests through other people because I am a money person and I do follow it very well. On this particular day, when she asked you, you gave her really no reason for it because I guess you hadn't had the stuff in front of you to even give her an answer. And I'm not asking you for an answer today. I'm just asking you, would you look into it or can you tell me that it's true or not? $250,000 came out of the water fund. For some strange reason, money seemed to have gotten mixed up with money coming out of TIF number four, $250,000. I don't know if you all borrowed from it, used it, or what you do with it. But I do know that transpiring with the money, that that $250,000 came up and it showed You all paid it back. I'm not saying that you did. You did pay it back. Now, on another front, there's an issue with our property taxes. Property taxes on a for your request back when you were sitting on the board has nothing to do with basically you because you weren't the mayor, but I do know that you probably should know about it. It was $499,936.09, which you all had got probably from the property tax people. You all have been paying it back, and right now you owe $189,338.82. With my understanding, to understand something like this, if you got a big, if the city got a big payment like that, that was not really due them, why didn't they send it back? And what happened to the money? And who was the person that accepted it, used it? And why shouldn't they be accountable for it? So those are the two things that I'm asking you about. Is it possible that you can tell me that you all borrowed the money from TIF number four in an amount of $250,000? And y'all took the money from the water fund? However it went, that the money is back? That the money is not back as of this minute? But, and how much money do we have left in the water fund at this present moment? Now, if you don't have the answers tonight, you can give me the answers next week. It doesn't matter. But I'm saying, in regards to your for your requests, it showed itself. Maybe in ways that you didn't think that it would, but it did.
Okay. We didn't keep, for some reason, we didn't keep a clock. But anyway, first of all, you're confusing water fund money with TIF money. That's, you know, we can't co-mango. That's, I don't understand where that came from, who gave you that information. But water fund is the water fund, and in the water fund is also your garbage money. So I don't know where that came, that we borrowed money from the water fund and then the TIF. We can't borrow money from TIF. TIF is there, we pay bills, that's fine. If it comes from that, it's not a borrow. We don't borrow money since I've been on the board, I've never seen us borrow any money from TIF. Water fund is different, and the board votes on that. So water fund and TIF four, and then you say $250,000? Since I've been mayor, I never had a disbursement of $250,000 at one time, so, but I don't know. And as far as money that's being paid back to the TIF, I'm sorry, to the water fund, I mean, it's ongoing. Has money been paid back? Sometimes it is, sometimes it's not. To be truthful, a lot of times it's not being paid back to the water fund. If we had that kind of money, then we wouldn't have to borrow. As far as property taxes that were, or taxes that came in that were in excess of 400, I think you said $453,000, that money is now being paid back. At some point in time, there was a mix-up that it wasn't being paid, but now it is getting paid back. And that was before, as you stated, I didn't even know that we had not paid back, but it is being paid back now. And it was 400, I thought it was close to 500,000, but anyway, they sent us a payment and it came into the village. I mean, the village of Country Club Hills receives $6 million. And I'm sure, I don't know what kind of payment arrangement, but I will let you know this, that if you don't pay them back, they will deduct it from the payments that they get from you. So that's not a problem. But in any case, we are paying that money back. Anyone else?
The problem that we have is too much type of money coming out of borrowing from the water fund. You all need to try to figure out some other way to get money because we voted a few years back for Lake Michigan water. We may not get that, but we voted. And if we keep on borrowing and taking so long to pay it back, either going to look, how can we get any kind of grant, anything for that? We need to figure out some other way to get some money, some other way to go to water fund. It's just, what else? You can't keep a borrowing amount in front of Peter to pay Paul.
Okay, you want me to answer that? Just want me to acknowledge. Pardon me?
Yes, I would like an answer.
Okay. Since I've been on the board, they've borrowed money. But before that time, we had a credit rating. And we stopped having a credit rating some five or six years ago. So therefore, if we run short, there's only two things we can do. Raise taxes, or lay off, or don't have jobs. But that being said, the money that we do get from the water fund, we try to pay it back. We're not the only community in Illinois that does that. Does it stop Lake Michigan water? By no means, because you're going to take, it's going to take almost close to twice as much as what we are charging to get Lake Michigan water. And that little money you're talking about, Lake Michigan water's millions. And whenever it gets a report to show you just how much it's going to cost each and every resident just to get Lake Michigan water, this was said many, many times, that you're going to pay that amount for two years approximately before you get Lake Michigan water. So you'll be paying for what you have now for two years because there's a lot of steps involved in getting Lake Michigan water. Just can't say we're going to get Lake Michigan water. So it takes a little time. With that being said, going further, going forth as far as borrowing the money, I'm trying to get us in a area where we can get a bridge loan and a credit rating. So right now is what I'm trying to work on, that we can have a credit rating so we can go to the banks, as anyone else may do, as you know, for your own personal, and get a bridge loan and pay it back every year, but you use that instead of, as you stated before. But right now, we're, you know, that's the only thing that we can do if we want to continue to operate. It is not just payroll, it's day-to-day expenses. We'll go right into mayor's report. I did have something here for, okay. Sam's Club is coming out, and I just wanted to let everyone know that they'll be out. I don't know what happened to it. I just had it. Someone, I must have moved it. But I, you know, something, I'll get it, I'll have it back by the end of the meeting. So I'll make sure that I can read it out before that time. Also, we're going to have a meeting of the night, not more say, of the businesses at the end of this month. You're going to, there's more information to come, but I'm going to invite all of our businesses to come out, that do business in the village, to come out so we can have more or less of a meet and greet, we can find out what it is they want, and let them know what it is we would like to see, and get to know each other. So that's something that's going to happen here on the fifth Tuesday of the month. And there'll be more information forthcoming on that. That's all that I have. I let my department heads, I don't try to interject anything that they do. So we'll go with, madam clerk, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple things that I would like to report out. First of all, I would like to give a summary of the for years that have been received in December. On December the 5th, we received one for requesting information for property code violations. On the 5th hearing, that we received one from Pat Couch regarding a copy of the employment related invoices for the Owens Group, Dr. Slaughter, and someone else that it's not legible. On the 5th, we also received one from Bernice Brewer, and that was the report to show all the transfers of funds and loans and current ballots of the water fund. That was a very sizable document. So rather than handing it to her, I invited her in to inspect it, and instead she made a couple of copies of it, and I'm not certain what happened to the copy that was supposed to be for inspection only. On the 6th of December, Gary Holcomb submitted the very same request in the exact same order. He was given the opportunity to come and inspect. Instead, he asked if he could present a flash drive, and I gave him the information on the flash drive. On the 6th of December, Heidi Parker sent a request for background checks for several personnel that was sent to the Sawt Village Police Department who responded. On the 6th, Gary Holcomb also sent a request for a copy of expense reports for issues relating to IML that is closed. On the 11th of December, Bernice Brewer sent a request for all BLRs, and that totaled 29 different BLRs. On the 11th, also Bernice Brewer requested bank statements in the general ledger for MFTs from January 2006 to January 2009. We were able to provide her a partial that is still with Attorney General's Office because we do not have all of the documents as requested. On the 12th of December, Gary Holcomb asked to inspect reports and costs for the demolition of Hometown Heroes property. On the 20th, Bernice Brewer requested the balance of the water fund, documents to support the checks issued to Joseph Wizwadi and Kelvin Jones. The 22nd, it's when we started receiving a number of requests from the Attorney General's Office based on other reports that had been requested. So we are responding to and/or have responded to their public access counselor relative to Gary Holcomb's two for years. One of them crossed in the mail, and he did not realize that it had been answered. We received a code violation from Estrella. Then we received two other requests from the Attorney General. One was dealing with Bernice Brewer's MFT statements, though she had been given what we had available. We have another one that's ongoing, that's the one from Pat Couch, for the one dated 12/5. We never received it. I never received it. However, we are working to get that one completed. So those are our for years that has kept me very, 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 very busy. But we do have a very positive that took place in December, and that is, we gave out more than 115 gift baskets to the residents here, and we had numerous volunteers. And I just want to call their name real quick, just so I can say thank you very much. Mary Escobedo, Renee Richardson, Jackie Glaze, Bernardine Hopkins, the senior committee, Linda Todd, Gillian Collins, Sherri Jazinski, Sue D., Kathy Betcher, Rachel Lupiant, Mr. Harvey was absolutely amazing, my nephew, Breeman Campbell Jr., Radona Brown, Susie Seiner. If I have left out your name, please charge it to my head and not my heart. We also have to thank Police Chief Kowalski, again, the senior committee, Grace United Church of Christ, Sawt Village Bible Church, Crossroads Church, and of course, you, Mr. Mayor, who donated heavily as well. Thank you very much. Our residents were very, very pleased with the product that we produced. On to calendars and meetings. In the back, you have a listing of all of the proposed meetings that was voted on back in December, so hopefully everyone has a copy of that. Know that it's subject to change for the trustees, as well as chairman that's in the audience. May I ask that you give me a copy of your meetings and the locations where you're going to be? And/or if you are a trustee, there is a calendar in the back, a memo is forthcoming that will actually say exactly what and how to follow through with that. And Mr. Mayor, that completes my report.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry, just before we move on, can I just make a quick comment, madam clerk? I didn't catch this before when we dove it on to the schedule for 2018, but just to bring to everybody's attention, July 11 is a Wednesday, not a Tuesday, so I think it was meant to say that.
Okay. Thank you. Treasury report, Ms. Judy Soufton?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to bring to the board's attention that...
You might want to use the mic.
Mr. Mayor, all I wanted to do is bring to the board's attention that the report that I read through last month contains sections where it does detail by month, the revenues, the expenses, and the details behind it. I believe it was the request of one of the board members to get the same report for different months, but the detail is in the report itself. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the board.
Thank you. Okay, reports from departments.
I got a question. The 7th, on page, this seems like the same report we had last time. This is not a different report?
Exactly, it's the same.
Okay. On page 5, it shows that $82,841.64 was transferred out of the utility taxes. Is that right? Because I don't recall voting on that. On page 5, you don't have a page numbers. It says utility taxes, $82,841.64 was transferred out of utility taxes. And in addition to that, I know we have had quite a few transfers out of the water fund. It doesn't show any in the different months. So how do you tell on here, well, how do you decipher on here that money was transferred out of the water fund? You did approve some monies from the water fund.
And this is from our financials, so let me have the opportunity to research your questions, and then I will give that to you.
Okay. Now, it's also my understanding that 1.2 billion dollars that we receive since we've been here, since May, in the water fund, is that correct?
I'm not sure.
Okay. And we got, well, I'm just going by the figures you got here, that we got 1.2 million, and can you tell me, well, I guess maybe after you changed the report, how much did we authorize to be transferred out of the water fund since May? Because it, you know, the transfers are not on here, so I can't tell. This is what the board authorized.
Trustee, if I may, this is a collector's report, so it's not necessarily going to show what was transferred out. It's what would have been received, correct?
Correct. Well, okay, she indicates on page 4 that some monies were transferred in that particular month. So I'd like to know how much money was transferred in those months, May, June, July, August, and September. You got it on page 4?
I will research that question.
Okay.
It is meant to be a collector's report, so it could be that it's mixed between, you know, I tried to follow the same one that was given to me previously, and it could be that we tried to mix different intents for this report.
Okay, so we can't get it separated out?
I thought saying that, I don't know.
And are we going to get a collector's report for September and August, September? And I'm going to say November and December?
Right, and this report contains the detail I wanted. So it would seem that that's not necessary?
It's not necessary.
If you look at the page, on the first page, if you can see it by moment, so you see the records printed out by moment?
Yeah, I see the property taxes.
Property, no, they're tax licenses and permits and so on.
So I'm asking, are we going to get November and December?
It's already on here, so I'm working on it.
On my page? On page 2, it says property taxes, it doesn't have it here.
Oh, I'm sorry, for November and December? Yes, I'm working on November, and we have not closed the books for December.
Okay, then it also shows on here transfers. There's no transfers on here either, so.
For the month of October.
Oh, it has, October, November, and you said, of course, December's not closed out, so. Again.
It has a lot of trouble.
Okay. Again, I'm going to go back to page 4. It shows that $82,000 was transferred in October. Maybe Mr. Mayor can answer this. It's from the utility fund. I don't recall voting on that, so if somebody tell me, what did we do that?
It's a transfer in.
This is a transfer in? Did we collect that or transfer out? What is this? I don't know. I'm asking, I don't know.
It's $82,000. I don't know if the Director of Finance should respond to that, $82,000, correct?
You know what I mean? It says $82,000 on here.
I see.
Is it in or out? I don't know what it's for.
It's expense.
Well, okay, if it's expense, then what did we do with the money? But who did we pay? Is this for bills or? Is this for bills or what is it salary? What was the eighty-two thousand for?
Once we track that, we'll track two, we'll get that.
Yeah, we didn't vote on it, so I'd like to know what it paid for.
Okay, I have to go back. I forgot Mr. Zanik, our engineer, I forgot his, in my haste, I forgot to get his report. So village engineer, Mr. Jim Zanik.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm feeling the love. All right, tonight I'm asking the board to approve a resolution for MFT funding. This is the standard annual resolution that IDOT requires to authorize MFT expenditures for roadway improvements. Specifically, this funding will be utilized for the villages' portion of the 223rd Street and Cornell Avenue reconstruction. Recall that we have secured federal and county funding for most of the project. We only have to utilize MFT funding to pay for eight percent of the project. I will be happy to answer any questions you might have regarding this. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, no questions?
Got a comment. Mr. Mayor, I said this before. As, I don't know if you guys recall, there was a big water main break on 223rd a couple of months ago. And I understand that this money that Robinson Engineering is requesting is for repaving the road from 223rd going east. However, I'm still objecting to wasting that money when you know that that area over there, 223rd, needs more than just resurfacing. I understand that the monies for that specific area, but if you use the, according to the people at IDOT that I talked to, that if you use this BLL, BLR form to change the project, that you could get the pipes and stuff fixed over there. There are two loops over there that's in the, that needs to be addressed. My concern is that why would you repave the road when you know the underneath has all the problems? It's wasting taxpayers' money to spend, I'm thinking this is close to six-hundred and fifty thousand dollars, to repay that area over there when you might have to dig it up the next two or three years because there's going to be another water main break over there. We managed it up pretty good, and it's, the whole thing in this village is that we need infrastructure repair, even if you don't get what Lake Michigan water. And it's a shame that we've been wasting taxpayers' dollars to repair, repave the road when underneath everything is going to bust anyway. That's crazy to me. So that's my comment.
Okay, and I appreciate your comment. However, this village is about sixty-two years old infrastructure. If we wait till we repair all of the infrastructure, we won't replace any roads. The money that came in for this has been over a year now that this project has been put in place. It has, they've had the contractors come out, do their due diligence. They've had engineers come out to do their due diligence to make this happen. It's going all the way to Torrance Avenue, all the way down to Cornell, and then Cornell down to Salt Trail. Now, in order for that to happen, this has all been put in place. Everybody had to, the engineers and architects, everybody had to get involved in it. If we put this on hold for just that, all it would take to fix that pipe, like we do every other pipe, is to put a slit in the, in the, the street itself, maybe about two or three feet wide, dig down, take the pipes. But to put this whole project on hold, to wait until we do that, because first we have to have the money to make that happen. And also, you're going to have main breaks going down 223rd Street. You better believe that. A lot of them have happened already, so are going to happen. This infrastructure is old. But if we wait until we fix all the infrastructure in the village, first of all, it's going to cost billions, not millions, to do that over a period of time. So if we're going to wait on that, then all of the streets that we have are going to be in disrepair. We're doing what we can right now with what we have. When that happens, yes, we're going to have to do that. But who's to say that it won't happen somewhere else? That we've already taken care of, we already repaid. You said this before, but I'm saying now, we cannot put a project on hold if it's just for that reason and then get everybody back. Because they made their deadlines. All these contractors that are involved have their deadlines, and they've already put their calendar together with us involved. If we come back to them and tell them, wait a minute, don't, let's wait until we get through with this, it throws their calendar off. Who knows if we will get CDBG money back or MFT money? Because we're putting this on hold to fix something that, well, we do know that it has to be done, care of that, and then deal with that problem when it comes. I wish we did have enough money to fix all the infrastructure in Salt Village, but at this point in time, we don't.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, only thing I was saying is, we're covering up the same problem we've been doing for the last twelve, thirteen years or so. The street where you want to repave this road on 223rd needs work over there. There's, just like putting a bandage on something that's already broken. It's wasting taxpayer's money to keep doing it. I understand Robinson Engineering, that every year you go by and you go through the villages, see what streets, but this is wasting taxpayer money. The under level needs to be fixed before you put an overcoating on it. As simple as that. And that's my, and my, my comments. It's wasting taxpayers' money to spend all that money to fix the pipe, I mean, to fix the roads when the pipes aren't there good. Crazy.
Are you through? Can we go on? Thank you.
Yeah, you go.
Thank you. Finance Administration Director Mohan Ra.
I thank you, Mayor, and the board. I have completed Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity reports for the two grants on January third, which was the deadline to report. Also, I'm going to do the reporting on the COGS grant tomorrow morning, that we need to turn in the report well before the end of January thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. That ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
I got a question.
On?
Mr. Mayor?
In regards to what is?
Finance, yeah.
Okay.
Audits are done, and when are we going to get a copy of the report?
The audit is done. We're going to put the audit report on the next council meeting once, in the next council meeting, if it is discussed. And it will be approved in the next board meeting. That is, the last board meeting, and it will be provided to all the board of trustees.
And there's also, was a county firm that came in to do some, did some work? When are we going to get that report?
I don't know, but I need to, yes.
You said a county firm?
There was another county firm, other than.
Oh, a county firm? Okay. The report, we will, when I get all of the reports back from them, I will disseminate that to the board.
How much was that?
How much was what?
The report. How much was there? How much did he charge?
Oh, I do, I have the numbers in front of me, but you'll get all that when, when I get everything. First of all, I don't pay anybody until I get through and I get reports. So when I get the report from them and look over what it is, then the board will get a copy.
Mr. Mayor, is this, is this the same firm you're talking about that you had advised us that you wanted to bring in to go over?
Yes, it is.
What is going on?
Yes.
And at that point, I remember you said you'd bring it before the board.
Yes. I mean, they haven't gave me a summary yet. They just got through with their work, so I guess they're, because they were asking questions back and forth. And until I get a summary of what, the scope of what I asked them to do, and I bring it back to the board and let them know what they did, and they are coming their findings, then yes, then after that, then the bill will be a matter of.
Well, what I meant by that is, when you said you'd bring it before the board, I thought the board would vote on that we would bring in this firm to go over our books.
You don't remember the board voting that we would, that we would bring the firm in? You're saying, what you're saying?
No, we did not vote on that. It was not brought before the board. And that's why I think when Trustee Brewer was talking about this accounting firm, and I remember in a board meeting, you said that you would, you were going to bring it before the board. We never voted on it, on this firm coming in.
I was under the impression that we did, because we had it in executive session. But, and we talked about it, but I haven't paid him yet, so therefore, it hasn't been paid. And the bill will come, and I will explain to the board. And I did explain to the board what I was trying to do and why I did that. That part I did explain to the board. And I don't understand why you're saying now that you didn't hear that, but, okay.
No, what I'm trying to say is, that you said you would bring it before the board. We were aware that what your intentions were.
Okay.
But there are things that need to be brought before the board if you're going to be spending money on this accounting firm that it should have been voted on by the board. Yes, your intention was there, and yes, we're aware, but it was never voted on. And that is the point that I'm trying to make.
That's what I'm asking. What is it that you're saying? Because I have to find out, first of all, I had to let them know what it is I wanted them to do. And I did tell the board, I don't know why you say you don't remember that, but I did tell the board why I was doing this. Now, the outcome, no, I haven't, I haven't gotten everything back from them yet. I haven't gotten everything that they did and to let me know exactly what was, what did they find, what their findings were. I haven't gotten that. When I do get that, I'm going to bring that to the board. I told the board, and that's what I don't understand, why you say you didn't hear that. I told the board why I was doing this. I don't understand what it is that you're saying that I didn't tell them.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not telling you I didn't hear it. I'm telling you we didn't vote on it.
Vote on what? Bringing the firm in?
Bringing a firm in.
We didn't vote on that.
That we're spending money.
You're saying that we didn't?
That we're, you're going to spend money. You want to bring a firm in to spend money.
Okay.
Okay. I thought we vote on things that are going in and out of here.
Okay.
Now, I, yes, I did hear that you said that you wanted to bring this firm in.
Okay.
I pay attention to everything that is said. Now, then you said, I will bring it before the board to be voted on. We never voted on it. In other words, and I, and I'm not sure the name of this firm?
Tastberry.
Okay, well, looking through one of these, I saw a name that was sixty-one hundred dollars. Now, money is being spent, and we did not vote on, yes, bring this accounting firm in. Yes, you told us your intention.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying. You're saying that you didn't, we didn't, that there is no record of being voted on to bring the county firm in?
Correct. We knew your intention because you told us your intention.
Mr. Mayor, while Mohan is here, I have a question. And this is something we brought up before, that when we get accounts payable, figures are written in without initials. So can somebody tell me, how are we supposed to prove accounts payable when somebody's writing in numbers and no initials?
Let me ask a question. Let me ask this one, and not just, just out of pure not knowing. When did you get accounts payable?
When did I get it?
Uh huh. When did you get this?
Well, does that have any question?
You're asking a question? And I'm asking a question, when did you get this account?
I got it on Friday.
Okay. You had, I don't know how many days to go to Mohan and ask him why these, because this is generated out of his department, why these numbers are here instead of, you know, typed in, why they're written in.
Well, I don't believe, Mohan was here on Monday, and Tuesday I just got back at the end of the day. And I haven't had a chance to ask him. But regardless of that, that's a question we asked before. Why are these figures on this accounts payable being changed without somebody initially? This is, this is nothing new. And we didn't get an answer then, we get it in an answer now. And to follow up with Linda Todd, we never voted on bringing in a different accounting firm to do anything, you know, it was never brought to the board. So money's being spent without the trustees' knowledge. So we'd like to know, what's the policy on that?
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to dig into that part, because I thought the board okayed me doing what I said I was going to try to do, but you're saying that it didn't. So I'm going to see if I can find that in a minute. And if it's not, then, okay, like I said, there's a bill coming. You can vote to not pay the bill. And as far as these numbers being put in, I can't answer that myself, because I don't know why. But I do, you know, know that Mohan has been here today. He was here Friday, but you said you got this Friday. So you can give, you can always give him a phone call and ask him why it's that way. But if you want to ask him now, he's right here. He can answer why he, and what's the reason for it.
Trustee Brewer, whenever we prepay any of the expenditure items, the system will not catch the prepay. For example, if we record one thousand dollars in expenditure, and if we pay five hundred out of one thousand dollars, still, the system thinks that we have not paid the bill completely. Therefore, it simply states, once again, it is thousand dollars. So we have to make sure that thousand dollars is in correct amount. Therefore, we have to rectify by striking out thousand dollars and putting their remaining balance as five hundred dollars.
I understand that, but my only thing is, the numbers have been changed. Nobody has initially. That's my thing. Why are numbers changed and nobody initially? I understand there's adjustments to the accounts payable, but somebody needs to initially something.
Moving forward, I will make sure that I will sign off on the corrections moving forward.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, Trustee.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, Fire Department, Captain Sennowitz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Over a period from December second through January fourth, fire department responded to sixty-three calls. We had twelve fire alarms, nine vehicle accidents, three gas leaks, seven neutral aid, eighteen ambulance assists, six CO alarms, two dryer fires, one smell of smoke, one vehicle fire, two water pipe breaks, one person locked in a vehicle, and one missing person. Mr. Mayor and your board of trustees, we would like to thank everyone for keeping the wreath red. We had, we were fortunate to have no structure fires during this holiday season. I would like to remind everybody to clean their dryer lint traps after every use. As I stated, we responded to two dryer fires, which resulted in lint buildup in the traps. We have had fire personnel at the station from December twenty-sixth through January fifth around the clock. This allowed for a quick response, as well as a warming center for those who needed it. Reminder that please keep off natural fires, wave of space heaters, to avoid fires. Also, have your flues checked in on your fireplace regularly to avoid a soup buildup if you can cause a fire. Reminder also to dress warm, keep yourselves covered to avoid prospect. That is my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Police Department, Chief Robert Kowalski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, trustees. For the period between January first, two thousand and seventeen, and December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen, the police department received twelve thousand, five hundred and ninety-three calls for service. During that same period, our department made five hundred and eighty arrests. So that's more than one and a half a day for the year. On November twelfth, officers responded to a report of a shooting victim that I reported in the area of the business at Salt Trail and Jeffrey. Victim was taken to St. Margaret's Hospital. Due to the injuries, he was transported to Stroger Hospital. The offender was identified by witnesses, and evidence was collected by our detectives as we reported. The shooting resulted in detectives securing an arrest warrant, and they arrested the offender on December sixth, two thousand and seventeen, in Georgia. The offender was eventually extradited back to Illinois on January fifth, and the state's attorney's office finally approved aggravated battery with a firearm charge on the offender. This matter is now in the court system. On December twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, or two thousand and seventeen, our detectives have secured felony charges on allegations of an offender possessing child pornography. The detectives interviewed a victim several times, who provided information, which led to the arrest of the offender. The state's attorney's office approved felony charges for the possession of child pornography, as well as charges of distribution and manufacturing child pornography. Lastly, I'd like to point out, the Salt Village Police Department does an outstanding job throughout the year protecting the citizens of Salt Village and their guests. The officers answer plenty of calls and make plenty of arrests, as I mentioned before. But I'd like to elaborate on an issue that was brought up at the last board meeting about the lack of support from the Cook County State's Attorney's Office and the judicial system. For a period between September twenty-seventeen through December twenty-seventeen, officers filed petitions on juveniles who have committed crimes in the village for crimes such as burglary, criminal trespass, to unlawful possession of a firearm. For that period alone, we received. For that period alone, we received thirteen no-decision letters from the state's attorney's office. And those letters come to our detectives, just like this, where they inform the parents that their children will not be charged with the offense that we built the case on. As you know, this is very frustrating, not only for victims, but for our officers. But I promise you, as a department, we will continue to file the petitions against juvenile offenders, and arrest those individuals who commit crimes, so that we continue to do our part to make Sauk Village a better place to live. Now, on a better note, on December 19th, the Village Police Department hosted our annual Shop with a Cop program at the Kmart store in Steger. This yearly event partners the police department with children from the Sauk Village School District 168. This year was very successful, and we were able to take twenty-seven children shopping. We're also able to provide the children with the most amount of money than they have in the past. We also had plenty of volunteers, and I want to thank everybody who volunteered and helped us on that day. We also wanna include the assistance of the Kmart management team, that made this event truly a great time. And again, I want to thank everybody for their help, and for the very generous donations that helped make this holiday season memorable for the children of Sauk Village. Lastly, I received a letter of recognition for Officer Matt Zylas that I'd like to read, from the Bloom Trail High School truancy officer. Says, "Dear Chief Kowalski, I would like to take this opportunity to express my gratitude and appreciation for the assistance from Officer Matt Zylas, star number 138, for his considerate service displayed by assisting me on truancy home visits. As a second-year truancy officer at Bloom Trail High School, I've learned the high demand of the Sauk Village Police Department, and I'm truly thankful for being able to work with them in between calls, and as well as for the, such a harm-warded, uh, harm, a warm-hearted officer. I would like to recognize Officer Matt Zylas from the Sauk Village Police Department, who assisted me on these home visits. Without his assistance, I would not be able to reduce the truancy rate at Bloom Trail High School. Officer Zylas is an incredible professional, who displays astounding service. Officer Zylas is a distinguished employee, who is an asset to the Sauk Village Police Department, and to the law enforcement profession. With great appreciation, Kim Krasic, Bloom Trail truancy officer." That ends my report.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chief. Emergency Management Agency Director Alan Vabrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Board. I just wanna, at this time, wish everybody a Happy New Year, even though it's nine days into the new year. Uh, also, too, we have some inclement weather coming in. We got a lot of heavy fog coming in, in the morning time, and supposedly over the weekend, we're supposed to have some, uh, snow and some ice. Just a little information, um, on I-57, I was talking to an I-DOT crew member just this past week, uh, with this ice and the snow. They had seventy-eight, seventy-eight accidents from I-80 down to Route 30. They, they included major accidents and minor accidents. Just gotta be a little bit careful when we're out there on the roads, uh, with this heavy fog coming in, visibility is only sometimes a few feet, sometimes it's only a car length in front of you. Just take the extra time, precaution, and give yourself the space. Last year alone, we, uh, my department has answered over three hundred calls for the village, in reference to the police and fire department, and, um, hopefully, you know, we can continue that, um, partnership going on, uh, coming up here and everything. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Public Works Director Kevin Welker.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have several items here. It's been a busy, uh, end of the year for us. Uh, we had a, we had a late start to winter, and decided to catch up with us in December here. Uh, December, during the holiday season, we've had quite a few water main breaks. Uh, staff has repaired, I have on my report ten breaks, but up to today's date, it's twelve breaks, um, since, basically since the middle of December. Three of the repairs had main sections replaced of the water main. We had clamped it, had to come back at the job, um, days later to repair a section of water main. Most sections were anywhere from eighteen feet to thirty-six feet of water main, uh, in these two locations, or three locations. Um, the boiler orders that were put into effect during that time were lifted. All residents affected, um, had release of the boiler order notices given to them. We still have three locations, um, to be repaired, which are, uh, 223rd Street and, uh, Merrill. That's a hydrant that has to be replaced after the valve was repaired. That's an open hole at this point, should be done tomorrow, started on tomorrow. Shirley Avenue, we had a water main break on Shirley, and, uh, two-two completed at this time, and the, and the boiler was lifted. We currently have an open hole on Merrill between 223rd Street and 221st. That is through a driveway, and that also is a section of eighteen-foot water main that would be replaced in there. So there's two open jobs right now, the one that is, uh, the valve and the hydrant, and then the one on, I'm sure, um, Merrill, in between the 221st and 223rd. Um, at this time, we also had six snow events. Uh, we had some ice, we had some snow, we had a mixture of everything else, and then it got to the deep freeze. When the weather gets that cold, and anything that's put on the street right now, even the snow that's on there right now, it didn't melt right away, we salt to a certain level. We can't over-salt, it doesn't melt the snow any faster. So when residents call and say that they haven't been down my street, but the street has a passable two lanes, that's usually what'll happen during a salt event. When we have an excessive amount of snow on the ground, we will plow it off, and then we'll layer a salt layer after that. It's the traffic and it's the sunlight that activates the salt and causes more of the melting. So if we have the weather we've had for two weeks straight, not much is gonna get done, and if more is added to that, it'll just continue to stay on the ground. Uh, we also had a pretty good frost line in two weeks that had, had started up. That's what caused most of the water main breaks, shifting ground, et cetera, a lot of freezing up. Uh, we've also had, we worked with other departments during this time to, uh, work on a few vehicles, um, some police vehicles, some ESDA vehicles, and, uh, we've had multiple vehicles of our own repaired. We had some backhoe issues that we had to take care of during our snow event. The weather is havoc on hydraulic systems, so we had some broken lines. Those were all taken care of. Also, staff has been called out on several occasions. At this point right now, it's about twenty, I think twenty or twenty-two homes right now. Residents, um, wait till wintertime sometimes to check all their pipes that are close to the outside of the houses and the walls. Um, so they should probably go in the summertime, check all your piping, insulate your piping, put some insulation between the walls. But what'll happen when the weather warms up a little bit like this, we get the moisture in the air, and it freezes faster. So pipes in the walls will suddenly break, or they'll thaw out and break. So all these locations were broken pipes in houses, some of them were vacant houses, those addresses were turned off, it created ice flow in the street, which we had crews out there removing the ice flow in the streets, which is difficult to do when it's so cold, because it's pretty frozen to the ground. And then we will salt these locations over until, um, it pretty much melts or is gone. Um, let's see here. We also finished, uh, prior to the holiday, we had a short list of the north side shut-off list. It was not very much. We had to do our pit reads and our commercial reads. Those were all completed. Um, at this time, we haven't did any pothole patching, but as the weather, hopefully the roads clear up a little bit, I've noticed, uh, in a few spots that they're starting to open up again. Um, this is the worst time of the year, because now we had that quick frost, so it's, it's gonna buckle all these soft areas, and then once it softens up and traffic goes over, it'll create the potholes. So we will be out as soon as we get a chance, um, to, to patch all those up. And if anybody's wondering, we will take the decorations down, it will be a few weeks, um, but we're, and I put those on a priority right now. Um, I also have a comment to the question, uh, that you brought up about, uh, 223 St. Street and Cornell. Uh, we did a main replacement and a valve replacement on the other side of, basically 223rd Street, between the highway and Cornell, and up to the edge of the road on 223rd Street. Our goal is to replace the main underneath the 223rd Street to the other side. So when they do their work over there for the roadway, we will not have to do that at a later date. It's just replacing a couple sections of main across the road, which we're already ready to do it. It's just a matter of removing it, temporary doing it, and then they'll come back and do the roadwork and patch it all up. So that will be done. In some areas, the main replacement is what we're trying to do through driveways, through roadways, anywhere we open up the asphalt or the pavement, because we don't wanna have to come and rip that back out again at a later date. So this is, this is what we're trying to do. Our goal is to do, replace our main valves, so every job we do repair is done more permanently, so we're not wasting money or time. This also will attach to, um, I'm working with Robinson Engineering, Jim Zarneck. We're putting together a little information to try to replace the water line underneath 394, so this will be all inclusive of that project. That one will take a few more, probably years, to get it all finalized, when we start the project to finish, but it is all part of the same project. And that concludes my report.
Got a comment. Uh, Kevin, uh, Mr. Welker, you, did you, did I hear you mention that it was a boil order, boil order issued?
Uh, yes, we had, we had two of them issued over on Merrill Avenue. Well, it included a few more addresses off of Merrill, where we did the main replacements. When we shut the whole main down and cut it open, we have to put a boiler out.
Okay. Well, I wanna commend you in letting us know that, um, I did, uh, that water main main should be replaced around 223rd. That was one of my concerns, of spending all that money to repay the road when they know the water mains breaks over there, need to be fixed. You know, it's good to know that somebody's telling us something about what's going on with our money. To pay all that money to repay a road over there, and then you have to go back and dig up the water main, is crazy. So I appreciate you saying that, and as part of your reporting. If you got anything else that could add to us about that area over there, I would love to know how much of that is gonna be replaced, uh, in the next two or three years, you know, or something. So it's, it's fantastic to know our money's going to the right place.
That it? Okay, thank you. Um, Community Development Director Sherry Zeszk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would like to give the board an update on seat James Otto, since we haven't had a meeting. Uh, I-DOT attorneys advised that the building has been secure and provided us with a couple contacts, in case there's any problems that we may arise. Uh, they intend to demolish the structure this summer. Um, code tickets written from January 1st to December 31st of 2017 was a total of three thousand ten. Total fines on these tickets equalling nine hundred and eight thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. On January 3rd, our court called, we had a hundred and twelve tickets on the docket, four were found liable, two were found not liable, and a hundred and six were found in default, and fines were placed at seven fifty for no, for non-appearance. Uh, this concludes my report.
Thank you. Economic Development Director Joe Wizwati.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy New Year to the Mayor and Board, to everyone. We've finished our review of the business licenses and made our recommendations to the ordinance review committee, who will be providing further input on these recommendations to Village, that the Village staff's made. We've also updated the Village's business license application and liquor license applications as well, which will be used going forward. It is our hope that the applications will be readily available on the Village's website sometime soon. I have not updated the economic development, uh, website, webpages, as the Village's website has not been redeveloped since, uh, we did our last update. However, I will be submitting changes to the economic development, uh, pages, uh, to IT, to have those updated and current each month. The Lincoln 394 Enterprise Zone met last week and elected me as their president. Um, the Enterprise Zone consists of nine communities, each with a representative appointed. The board expresses appreciation to Mr. Mohan Raul for his service over the last several years as their administrator. I've been in ongoing contact with the representatives of the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity about a new development within the logistics center. The developer, which is out of New York, has already, uh, had an onsite visit to the development, and we are in the process of putting together an economic development incentive package for their decision. The development would consist of three phases. The first consisting of construction of a hundred fifty thousand square foot facility, with phase two including rail spurts, pension, and phase three warehousing. We are still in ongoing negotiations and discussions with the commercial developer and a potential long-term tenant for construction of the twenty thousand square foot retail plaza on Sauk Trail. Tenant is in the process of imminent urgent diligence, and hopefully, they'll be making a decision here soon. Village engineer Jim Zarneck and I will be on a teleconference, uh, meeting with the buyers of the property that the Village is negotiating to sell, on the northwest corner of Sauk Trail and 394. That will be with the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District this Thursday. Uh, Mr. Zarneck provided his recommendations. We're moving through the technical process, while the ground is nice and frozen, so that we can move forward in the spring. And finally, we'll be holding our first quarterly business after hours event, as the mayor indicated, on June 30th, with more details to follow. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Public Service Committee, Trustee Bernice Brewer.
No report. Uh, one thing I ask, Kevin, can you give me updated on water main breaks? Can you give me updated reports? Thanks.
Budget and Finance Committee, Trustee Roger Graham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the Budget and Finance Committee did not meet last month. Uh, however, we will have a meeting, uh, excuse me, in two weeks, on the 17th, and which I did invite the treasurer to come to the meeting, and, um, plan to go over the, uh, policy procedures manual. Also, sorry about that, backhoe.
Stay down there.
Also, uh, I did ask Mohan to set up a meeting with the department heads to go over how they, uh, how they're tracking so far versus the budget. So that will be for the month of December. Uh, so that's gonna be eight months in, so we should get a pretty good picture of how we plan to shake out for the end of the fiscal year. Uh, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Uh, Parks and Recreation and Youth Services, Trustee Calvin Jones.
December 30th, um, it was a pretty cold day, but we still had open gym on that day. Didn't want any kids to walk up there, and the doors to be closed. So, um, we opened the doors and had a pretty decent turnout. Kids came out regardless, you know, maybe fifteen, twenty kids, and, um, at least they got a chance to warm up before they walked back home. I, I wouldn't have never did it, but it did, but yeah. They came out and, um, they had a pretty good time, and, um, we also still have basketball program going on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from three to five, three to six P.M. And Parks and Recs had their committee meeting on the 4th, and we did discussions on upcoming events. Next major event, uh, we're trying to fill a gap with something else, but next major event would be the Easter egg hunt. Um, time flies, it'd, it'd be here before you know it, so, um, so we're starting to have talks on that and dates and planning, so, uh, be on the lookout for that. And that concludes my report.
Uh, just a, um, update on the basketball program, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. I went over there a couple of times, and, um, the gentleman that's there, I understand, is voluntary, correct?
Correct.
And, um, he had a lot of children, a lot of kids there, a lot of teenagers, and, um, he seems like he has control over those guys, and, you know, pretty much, um, has them doing other things. He did convey to me that he was trying to look at other program, other than just basketball, and I'm glad to hear that, because, you know, there's more to life than that. That's a, that's a good segue to get people in, but just like I tell people all the time, you know, you go to college, if you get a basketball scholarship, make sure you use that to get an education, because everybody can't make it to the NBA.
Thank you for the report. Orders Review Committee, Trustee Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we will meet on January 25th at six thirty P.M. here at the Village Hall. Thank you.
Okay. Public Safety Committee, Trustee Bessel Pine.
The Public Safety Committee took January off for the holiday, as our standard meeting is the first Wednesday of the month, so we did not meet last week. However, the members are still working on their takeaways from the November meeting, uh, and, uh, so we're still making progress on some of our to-dos. Our next meeting will be the first Wednesday in February, though. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Our Reports of Committees and Commissions, Beautification Committee, Trustee Linda Eltai.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank Bob and Rose Ketchum for taking, or helping me take down the Christmas decorations. Um, but the atrium will be done probably Wednesday or Thursday, because now the weather will be warm, and I could get out there and get the things out of the atrium. And that ends my report.
Thank you. Uh, Senior Advisory Council Chairman, Mr. Emmett Farmer. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't have the mic. Is it on?
We did have, uh, meeting the Senior Advisory Council on the 14th of December, and we had three groups actually petition to use the senior center. Uh, Dr. Stansberry, uh, from Cedar, uh, Linda Washington, uh, for a community group for informative dialogue, and, uh, Ms. Gillian Cowling, 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 uh, a community group to have a plan... and Ms. Gillian Cowling, 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 uh, a community group to have a planned session for, uh, her events. And we did actually, uh, vote on those, uh, three groups to use the senior center. And, uh, we did vote for them to, uh, be able to use it, although we're, uh, voted approved. Also, uh, we're having a meeting Thursday, 5 o'clock. All welcome to come out in the senior center. And we're looking to, uh, vote on having health payers, uh, once in one. Uh, maybe start hopefully in February. Also, uh, we're looking at a couple more things, trying to get some, uh, trips for the seniors. So, we're going to be looking at, looking into that on our, with our meeting on Thursday. Again, it's Thursday at 5 o'clock. And that's all I have.
Uh, Mr. Farmer, when you get a chance, can I get a copy of those groups you said that were going to meet and the dates that they're meeting?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Okay, um, unfinished business. I will accept the motion for the approval of the resolution for the improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, Section 16-00037-00RS, for roadway slash street improvement for 223rd Street, Cornell Avenue, from Torrance Avenue to Cornell and from Cornell to Saw Trail. The resolution you have in front of you.
So moved. Second.
It was moved by trustee Zupan and second by trustee Todd. Any questions? Madam Plurk.
Trustee Zupan? Yes. Trustee Brewer?
Um, I'm staying.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Takes? Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Mo?
I'm sorry. Yes.
Motion is carried.
I'm sorry, just for clarity, trustee Brewer, you changed your vote from the state to yes. Is that true? It was hard to hear that, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I am to accept the motion for adopting the policy prohibiting sexual harassment for the village of Saw Village.
So.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Todd and second by trustee, um, Grant. Any questions?
Yes. Uh, I just wanted to point out on page, I guess, three, what it would be under the, uh, at the top where it says adopted. It says, uh, "By the Mayor, President, Board of Trustees, Village of Saw Village, Cookinwell County, Illinois, blank, day of February 2018." Probably should be January, um, because we voted on it today.
Hey, anybody else?
I'm sorry, we're doing this before council fair.
Yeah, no, I skipped it, I'm sorry. I'll go back to it. No, 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 it's, no, no, this is part of new business, so I made them, I just wanted to say B, but you had a question?
So, this, this is new business?
Yes, this is new business. I mean, I didn't do A because I skipped it, but I'm going to go right back to it. But we're on B now, adopting the policy for prohibiting sexual. Are there any questions? Trustee Grant gave a, a, um, any questions? Madam Plurk, please call the row.
Brewer?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Takes? Todd?
Yes.
Zupan?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Go back to motion, um, to the first one, a new business motion to approve accounts payable. And also, um, to approve the movement of $22,000 to, um, to be transferred from, um, the water fund for, um, securing the payments of accounts payable.
That's on the agenda?
No, it was asked. And, um, I'm going to bring it out. And that was asked, I think, I don't know if you got a call or got a, a email, so it was kind of, people didn't answer, so I'm bringing it out now. Um, there were some people that didn't answer, some people that didn't answer. So, this way, in case you didn't get a chance to get to it, I'm bringing it up now to also add that on to, um, transfer $22,000 even from the water fund and also to, um, approve the accounts payable.
Well, Mr. Mayor, we couldn't separate those two.
You're going to pay accounts payable, we need the $22,000. You just can't pass it and then say no to that, then that means the accounts payable's not passed because you don't have all the money to pay it. That's why it was asked, but that's why I decided to go ahead and do it this way, so it can be upfront.
Well, I got a question there.
We have to have a motion first. I said I'll accept the motion.
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Grant, second by trustee Zupan. Any questions?
Questions? Um, first, I want to reiterate my objections about, uh, figures written in without initials. Secondly, uh, also on here, I see again that, uh, Dr. Strata is on here again. Um, and, um, on page, uh, on page one, it shows that, uh, we're paying the attorneys for, um, FOP negotiations. And then on a couple pages later, they showed that we're paying Dr. Strata the same thing. Uh, that's, seems like to me that's not saving any money. She's on page three. Uh, on page one, we have, um, Republican service, the garbage collection. But still, I'm doing my research on the, for Republicans, there's still nobody at Republican who's reconciling those bills. They bill us every year for 2,600 homes, but we, we actually bill users 2,800 homes. So, we actually underbuilding them. Uh, well, they underbuilding us, that's what I should say. So, um, that's going to be an issue, because they're going to come back and say that, you know, we picked up these garbage for these, for these people and we're not being paid for. So, that's something we might want to look into. Um, on page one, there also, there's professional service, August and October's for, uh, what is this, dinners, jalapenos? And what is that for? Uh, also on page one, there's, um, ordinance and resolution for James McCullen. What ordinance and review is that? Um, also on page one, administrative review, review of what? Also on page one, we, we paid attendance for Scott R. Wheaton, associated for building code and municipal ordinance. What is that? On page three, uh, unit, union negotiation, Alicia Strata. Uh, Scott Wheaton on associate, uh, municipal ordinance hearing reimbursement. Uh, Scott Wheaton, uh, hearing emails about toll hearings. I mean, who are all these? It seems like they're attorneys doing something, so I don't understand. These people were hired by us to do this, or is it being farmed out? Um, so, what, what are the, what is, what is the guidelines for bringing their people to do business, act as agents for the village and they're not being appointed or even known? The trustees don't even know they exist, but they always show up on the, um, show up on the accounts payable. So, we have agents that's out here working on behalf of the village. And they, I don't know anything about the contracts, uh, for these people. So, I, I would just like to know just who we're supposed to be paying and why? We got all these people on here. Who are, who are these people? Scott Wheaton and Genopolis and all that, you know? These might have been people that's been around here for years, but, um, where, where did it come from? And it's, and it's, Dr. Strata again, I think that's a conflict of interest. We're paying Owens Group for HR and then we're paying her for, uh, union negotiation and she does HR too. That's double dipping and that's a conflict of interest. And I'd like some guidance from the attorney on what we're supposed to be doing with her. Because even though she's doctor and I know she had, she could do this stuff, it was never brought to the board.
Yes, it was.
This was never brought to the board.
Okay.
And we never agreed on her $85,000 an hour contract. We never agreed to HR after two lines. Well, like I said, it wasn't brought to the board.
Okay, first of all. Oh, you're not through? Okay, go ahead.
I mean, um,
You're not through, go ahead.
It was brought to the board. I've been here every day and I haven't seen a contract or her, it will contract for $85,000 an hour. I haven't seen that. I haven't heard from it. Excuse me. I haven't given up the floor.
I didn't say, I didn't say anything.
Okay, I, I'm not, I haven't given up the floor. You certainly are. Or?
Trustee, are you through? Trustee?
No, once, once the village clerk is she running, are you?
Excuse me.
Excuse you.
Are you through?
Are you through?
Okay.
I haven't given up the floor.
I'm not, I'm not going to even address that. Thank you. Any other questions? Madam Plurk, could you please call the row?
I'm sorry. Grant?
Yes.
Jones?
No.
Takes? Todd?
Yes.
Zupan?
Yes.
Brewer?
No.
Motion is carried. Motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the village to designate Old Plank Trail Community Bank as a depository for the village of Saw Village. I'll accept the motion.
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Grant, second by trustee, um, Zupan. Any questions?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, I just want to point out on, uh, page three, where at the top where it says being further resolved, it has Derek Ann Burgess, village president, Marvin Campbell, village clerk, Mohan Rauel, treasurer. Either that should be finance director or it should be Ms. Treasurer Zupan's name in that place, vice versa. It doesn't, I don't know which one it is, but.
I see what you're saying. You're saying on page, I guess this would be page three or something. It says Mohan Rauel, treasurer. It should be Mohan Rauel, finance director.
I'm going to use the treasurer's name, use her name instead.
I, I see what you're saying, either or. Either the treasurer's name in there or, okay.
So, which is it?
It should be Mohan Rauel. But, um, I don't know. So, are you saying that you want that corrected, correct?
Yes.
Finance director. So, you want to approve it with those, with that correction?
Yes.
Any other, any other, um?
Mr. Mayor, we, uh, we talked about this, um, depositing money at Old Plank's bank, but I was under the impression that it was for the $100,000 to have, um, so we could get a line of credit. Now, this resolution here has nothing in here about $100,000. And it says, uh, depository of certain of its funds. That tells me you haven't identified the funds in there. The amount is not identified in the, uh, resolution. And there's no timeframe in here. So, to read this resolution telling me that you can move money from anywhere and keep it as long as you want. And, um, it implies that the money can be moved from anywhere. We can take it out of the water fund. Now, as I understand it, that this money was supposed to be moved from the Norris Mitigation Fund. It should be noted in here. And also, it does not identify the $100,000. That means that you can take $250,000, whatever, and move it. If this resolution is not complete, you know, it, it's misleading. And not only that, we don't have anything from the bank that says that he's going to give us a bridge loan and we've been waiting on that. Um, of course, we're going to let $100,000 sit in the bank for, I don't know how long, uh, just to pay this $83,000 that we owe on the cop cars. It doesn't make any sense to me. This resolution is incomplete. It seems like we should have some information from the bank saying what they need, how long we have to keep this money in there, how much it is, and identify it from us. We need something in here that says what fund this money is coming from. This, this resolution is, is, is just not right.
Any other questions?
I have a quick question. Are you, are you going to take, are you closing out any other accounts?
Yes, that's why it said as a, as a depository. And it was already, we've already talked about, what happened is that we talked about this also in open session, that the bank that we're banking with right now charging us, um, fees and the services are not adequate to what we need. That's why we were moving the money to Old Plank, which claims. Until after we do that, then the next step would be to try to get a bridge loan. But you're not going, nobody's going to agree to something until you actually do something. And worst-case scenario, if they don't, we'll come back and move it out of there. There is no set of time amount that we got to move money from point A to point B, keep it in there for X amount of time, then move it again. But that's how business is done. You, 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 you let them know that this is what you have. We tried to get these loans from the banks that we had and they wouldn't do it. Old Plank claims that they will help us out with that. So, we're going to give them a shot. That's basically, that's basically what it is. It's not taking money, there's no certainty, because we don't know what we're going to get at any given day.
Mr. Mayor, I was simply asking, you might have been addressing trustee Brewer with that. I simply asked if we were closing out all the accounts.
No, we're not closing all of them out. We're closing out a few, not all of them.
That you're going to take, that, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, we're going to close them.
Because what was in discussion is, and I, and when we first talked about Old Plank, the Old Plank Trail Bank, was that $100,000 was going to be put in an account and three police cars, because they wanted to lease them. Well, they couldn't get them leased, so we ended up with a loan through, through the bank. That's what the understanding that we had. So, I think with the resolution, what I wanted to know, because I'm looking at this, are you closing out the accounts? All the accounts for the village and we're going to all, they're all going to be here? Or you have, I know we have several banks. I know we have several accounts. And it was talked about, about what the fees were. And that Mohan was going to get back with us because he was checking out other banks to find out what didn't have fees. Because all those banks do have fees. My bank has fees, they all do. So, what I'm asking is, are you taking all of the village's money and deposit in this bank?
No.
That's what I was asking. I was talking about any bridge loan or any of that.
No, no, we're not, no, you're not, you're not going to take all, no, no. We're just taking money out. And that was one of the things that they said they would work with if we would move money. How much is going to be at this particular point, I don't know. I don't know exactly how much, because it differs from day to day how much is in and out. And it's basically, you, you know, you put it in, you take it out, put it in, take it out. So, um, that's what villages, because they get their money sporadically. So, I don't know how much it is, but no, to your answer, all of the bank accounts that we have, we're not taking them all out of all of them and putting them in one note.
Do we know what funds they're coming out of?
I don't know what funds they're coming out, but I'm sure Mohan can tell you tomorrow when he gets, you come and, and ask him or he can get that ready for you. But no, I don't know what funds they're coming out of.
Sorry, Mayor, if I can just add, it's not that they're coming out of funds. It's the funds are currently with a particular bank and we are moving those dollars from the current bank to this bank. It's not like we're losing money. It's just where that money resides is going to change. Thank you.
Madam Plurk, please call the row.
Yes, sir. Jones?
Yes.
Takes? Todd?
Yes.
Zupan?
Yes.
Brewer?
No.
Grant?
Yes.
Motion is carried. General comments from the Mayor and Board of Trustees will start with trustee Todd.
No comment.
Trustee Brewer?
Okay, uh, Mayor, I appreciate, uh, uh, Kevin Weller for explaining to us that, um, we're not just wasting our money repaying 223rd, 223rd, that we are looking at repairing the water main brakes. That's great piece of news for us and we're going to. That's great piece of news for us, and we won't be wasting our money. In response to a four request, I got a report that shows all transfer for all funds. And according to one of the reports that I received, two hundred fifty thousand, fifty thousand dollars was taken out of the water fund to repay money that was taken out of TIP four. So, I have it in writing.
Please show me that.
You know what? Mr. Mayor, I want to be sound facetious, but just like I did a four request, you can do it too. So, I have this statement, and we shouldn't have to, to take money out of TIP four. That's illegal, and none of us voted on it. I don't know where, who authorized the move for the two hundred fifty thousand dollars, but the money was moved. Again, we moved two hundred eighty-two thousand dollars for the utility fund. Nobody, none of us signed off on that. So I'd like to know, why is all this money being moved around, and we don't know about it? And the last thing I want to talk about is that I sent in a four request for MFT statements from two thousand six to the present, according to what I regained. I got back from the four-year officer, she said, "According to the mayor, I can only get two thousand ten to the present." Now, everything, I sent in another four request from two thousand six to two thousand and nine. They haven't responded yet. So, what I'm saying is, I send these four requests because residents ask for it. I'm not getting response, or you get half a response. So, when I asked for the MFT bank statements, it was put at the front desk and said I can get copies of it. I asked for it to be electronic transfer. For some reason, they, you guys wanted to give me a hard copy, I don't know why. But electronic transfer is how I like my four requests. Therefore, I could've just forwarded on to the requests before and stuff, so it would've saved everybody time and money. So I would appreciate it from now on, when I ask for a four request, and I specifically state where I'm gonna put the money out. Mr. Farmer, I have something before you leave. To send myself electronic email. And as far as, there's a four request that I submitted, asking for a copy of the handbook. He said he didn't have that, and that's gone to the state's attorney's office. I'm a resident of Saw Village, I'm entitled to public information. I don't know why I'm not getting, or getting half of something. So, I would like to know, what is the problem that I can't get what I need? And I'm on the infrastructure committee, and I'm still waiting on the number of users that we have been billing since September. You can't finish that report without the numbers. And you got to know how many bills you're sending out for quarter months, every month. It's, you know, it's crazy, you can't get information that you need. That's the end of my report.
Trustee Jones?
No.
Trustee Jones?
Clarify, what do you mean, the water users? The water users, they send out a bill every month, seeing how many water users there is.
No comment. Trustee Zupan?
Just, point of clarification for the clerk. I didn't receive any of the department head reports that apparently came out today in my pack. So I just, I happened to notice that my trustees on either side had reports that I didn't have. So, that's an FYI. And then, trustee Brewer, I'm just gonna ask the question. You keep asking for information, saying, you know, residents are asking you for this information. Who are these residents? Do they have names? And why aren't they asking for the information themselves? Why are they coming through you? Just a question.
Okay, first of all, I'm a trustee. That's what I was elected for, to address their issues. There's ten thousand of them, I mean, I can give you a whole voter registration list if you really want them. But if a resident come here, asks me for something, and I have it, I can give them a copy, as long as it's public information. Now, as far, if they want to come up here and ask for the same day again, but I'm not just gonna give out their information unless they want their information given.
I just find it interesting, sorry, and I know you're going back and forth, Mayor. I just find it interesting that they're not coming through the proper channels themselves, that they think they're...
What's the proper channel? Is there some kind of protocol written down themselves?
Yes, we have a foil officer that they can go to.
Okay, we can, we can discuss this. Trustee Grant?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last meeting, trustee Brewer did ask about the two hundred and, I think, twenty-five thousand dollars that was...
Two hundred fifty.
Two fifty that was in the water fund, that was transferred to the, to some general fund. I'm not sure anything about TIP four, but what I do know is that, per the budget that we passed, we do allow a certain amount of money that we transfer from the water sewer fund to general fund during the course of the fiscal year. And in that case, that amount was three hundred dollars. So, it's from my understanding that Mohan is allowed to take money during the fiscal year as needed, up to that amount. And I believe that's what's happened. So I don't think there's been money, money that's moved or missing. I think, well, okay, well, mismanaged or moved or anything. I think it's there, the money's moved to general fund, and those bills are paid. Excuse me. Is that correct, or, so, I, so I'm not sure anything about TIP four, but I just wanted to, you know, answer your question. And I know Ms. Renee asked that question tonight, about two hundred fifty thousand dollars. That is what I do know. So I'm not sure if anything else is missing, or if you say that you haven't seen, or just, you know, run it by me, and I can find out, I'll follow Mohan for you, if you can't get to him, and we can, like, talk about it and hash it out.
I appreciate that, trustee Grant, but I was elected just like you were. And I got documents that show that two hundred fifty thousand dollars were taken out of the water fund to pay back TIP four. Can you just please explain to me why that happened?
If that happened, I have no answer for you, but can you share that with me? I want to see it as well.
Really, we'll share that with you.
Thank you. I just wanted to read something I forgot to bring in my report about the Sam's Club. And on Tuesday, June, January thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, from ten AM to two PM, Sam's Club will be here in the village for anyone that would like to obtain a membership or renew their Sam's Club memberships. For a membership in the month of January, promotions are as follows. A ten-dollar gift card, free pizza, free rotisserie chicken, chocolate, chunk cookies, and a hundred and forty-dollar instant savings. So, it'll be who here to come out? I don't know if they give you this, if you get a membership right then and there, they'll give you all this, I'm not sure. But anyone that's interested in a Sam's Club membership, please come out on that date. Again, that's the last Tuesday of this month. From ten to two, it'll be in the hallway. I just wanted to say, I know we didn't get a chance to, to talk about it, but the new year, and as far as the winter, we do have a warming station. If anyone here, everyone here should know that it's at the fire station. So when the temperature gets below freezing, we do open up the fire station, and we use it as a warming center. That being said, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, can I just say one thing? Do you think that could be put on the marquee?
Yeah, I mean, we could put that up there, yeah. I mean, warming station, okay.
Right, because not if I was getting phone calls, and they said, "Well, okay, we have it on the E-News," but if they don't see that?
Okay.
The marquee might be, that had the, at actually the fire station to put it as a warming center.
I'll entertain the motion.
Sorry, just to follow up, we know that the fire department has that nice big sign. Maybe they can move that out to Saw Trail and put something on there as well.
Well, we'll see. I mean, I don't know if that sign lights up or not.
Well, it doesn't necessarily have to light up, it's just that it would be there for residents to see as they go past, that's all.
Any other trustee? I'll take, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Brewer, second by trustee Jones. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carried. Thank you.